We're going to be in the meeting of the Petaluma City Schools Board of Education. Moving on to, we're going to jump to item F because item E does not exist tonight. We have no public hearings. Item F is the adoption and approval of the agenda, so I will ask for adoption and approval of the agenda without the prior item that we just had.
Yes.
Do I have anybody having any changes?
None.
Play it as it lies, all those in favor?
Aye.
Closed.
Who's second?
All right, item G, approval of the minutes. I believe everybody is eligible for the June 24th minutes. See you later, Igores. You have any motion?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Minutes pass as presented. Where's Ray?
He's there.
He's behind me.
He's behind me. Ray, you're up. Item E, special recognition reports presentations. Ray?
All right. Here, I'll take your place. So in case anybody doesn't know, this is Ray DiGiamo, our food service supervisor for the district, and he wears many hats in the district, and he is what we call Ray Mazing.
Yeah, I don't know, I think this will work.
Is it plugged in? Turned on?
It's plugged down.
Turn on that aside.
No, you just turned it off.
If I could also remind everybody, cell phones, if you could put them on, vibrate or turn them off, I'd appreciate it.
There we go. So, Steve.
Okay, Petaluma City Schools presents the National School Lunch Program. We're going to start with an update from last year about Casa Grande. Casa Grande breakfast update, Casa's second chance breakfast program was eliminated in 1314 school year due to tutorial being moved at the end of the day. The outdated kitchen cannot support the amount of students in 15 minutes. Breakfast was served only before school started. 2012-2013 breakfast revenue was $84,919.71 with tutorial. 1314 breakfast revenue was $32,490.64 without tutorial. The breakfast revenue loss was $52,429.7. The revenue losses, what we presented in projected last year. Casa Grande breakfast update, 28,940 less breakfast were served, roughly 160 free and reduced students per day did not participate in the breakfast program compared to 1213 school year. What can we do? Casa Grande needs a facelift. Casa Grande Kitchen has never been updated to support the number of students we now have. Casa Grande needs speed lines to bring breakfast back. What are speed lines and how do they help? Speed lines allow students to grab and go. Right now, students are served one at a time. Two employees can serve students quicker than seven employees do now. It's labor effective, and we can bring back second chance breakfast. This is what Casa looks like right now. We have a counter with employees, and there's about 10, there's about 250 students there, just all piled up in front of the kitchen. What we would like to do is something like this, which is in and out. We can accomplish that by taking, taking the counter out here, removing this equipment, and over here, I want to cut two doors in. So then we would have four speed lines. The kids would come in, they would go out, and go right back into the NMU. The cost for construction is about $15,000. The equipment cost is 35 for a total cost of $50,000. Benefits of a remodeled kitchen, we would bring back second chance breakfast for students who cannot make it to school before breakfast. We've reduced labor and increased the needed revenue to the program and break even. The 2013-2014 challenges, again, born to help, $10,000. $10,780 loss of revenue at Casa. The co-op we used gave notice in April that they were shutting down, so we had to purchase food at street pricing towards the end of the year. And we did employee training for food safety, the new food safety requirements, and that was approximately $5,000. 2013-14 challenges, the USDA and NSLP, National School Lunch Program. With the new regulations changing week to week, it's been a challenge to balance the menus, and cost per meal has gone up because of the new regulations. Costs far more than the six cents that we were generously given per meal. Bottom line, total revenue, $1,929,538.68. Total expenses, $1,962,257.50. Total expenses include June purchases for July summer school of $21,000. We had to purchase in June for July with the vendors because they come out of LA. So, our year-to-date total was negative $11,718.50. Goals for next year, I'd like to use bond or capital facility funds to help us update Casa Grande Kitchen to increase our revenue, bring it back where it was. We're in a new co-op right now, so the commodities will be there all year. We're going to purchase produce from the Department of Defense, and we'll bring the program back to the black.
Stop. Department of Defense.
Yeah, Department of Defense. That's where we get our produce. I have no clue. It's probably something to do with that. I don't know for sure.
So, I'd like to commend Ray for the amazing work he has done this year, given the constraints of the new national standards, which have been pretty harsh. His beginning slide showed a person bound in red tape, that would be Ray. The choices of the food that he is required to serve is not being eaten. A lot of kids are throwing food away, and it's become wasteful. This is a huge change from where we, where we went with our wellness plan and actually serving the kids actually wholesome meals. I mean, Ray, in his program, he does not use any quote-unquote processed or chopped-in-form chicken, for example. He uses whole, whole protein, whole meat, whole lean muscle meat instead of chopped-in-form, which is a variety of other parts, other than high protein.
We continue, we continue to do that all year as well. So, and we're the only school district in Sonoma County that does that.
So, unfortunately, the way the National School Lunch Program is now operating, he's forced to, we don't even have choices or options under this in how he develops his menu, and the kids just won't eat it. So the garbage cans are full like they used to be when we used to, prior to Ray coming and revamping the program, and, and the food is a lot more expensive. He's required to purchase child nutrition labeled food, which means an instantaneous price increase. So, given the constraints that he's been under, the fact that he's only lost just over $11,000, just under $12,000, is pretty amazing to me. So, I'd like to thank you for the great job that you do for the district and the kids.
We, I sent you all from SNA, the School Nutrition Association. We all have a pamphlet that you can read later at your leisure. It tells about the million meals that have been lost in California this year from students not eating, and the bill that they're fighting to try to get things brought back into some normal situation. We still don't know now, we can use some white next year instead of using all whole grain, but they don't know for sure, but then they say yes, and we found out yesterday that we can do it with pasta only, but not with rice. We can only do it once every other, it's.
Ray, wasn't there a point, we tried to opt out, right? I remember, I thought we had tried to opt out because the federal government's program was more expensive, they reimbursed us less money, less choices, and quite frankly, the kids didn't need it, right? We tried to opt out.
The problem with opting out in Petaluma is we're not Santa Clara, where there's a small free and reduced population. Our free and reduce is pretty high, so we still have to provide those meals free and reduced. We could not absorb it with having paid meals, especially when you have open campus and things like that on sites.
But those are the federal strings, so we have to do this.
Exactly. So it's, it's catch 22, it's tough.
Free and reduced is what?
For elementary, it's around 42 percent. For the high school district, it's about 37 percent.
Of total population?
Right.
Of 75,000.
Right. And the thing, the reason why it's difficult for us to opt out, you would also lose all federal funding too. You're not allowed, we would lose our Title I funding, there could be repercussions on the federal funding for Special A, and it would be a huge loss, so.
There's a lot of things we could do. We could go to chopped-in-form on our products, then we compromise. And I think in, in my, have we, if somehow we can bring breakfast back to Casa, which is, which is 50K to do it, if we could do that, then we're going to bring that increased revenue, and we wouldn't be here talking about being $11,000 in red. We talked about being back in the black. And that's really the key, is how can we do that? And the kitchen's from 1970, it's the same one I, when I was there, you know, when I was in the area, so.
For me, it's not even just the money part, it's the getting breakfast to those kids because they would be better students if it happened.
Absolutely.
So, and I'm not into chopped-in-form, but I guess that's it.
So, remind me, if we were to have closed campuses for lunch, we couldn't serve everyone, right? We don't, we don't have the capacity to do it, right?
No, Petaluma High is probably the same when you went there. Okay, and that's not it.
It'll never be the same after that.
It was falling in blizzard.
They're old facilities.
Right. But you couldn't if you wanted to. If we said, hey, all of a sudden now, Ray, we're going to, we're going to give you a captive audience, you're going to have everybody, because In-N-Out Burgers know how good, no option. You couldn't do it, right? You couldn't serve.
I could if, I could at Casa if I put in the four speed lines, absolutely. That would not be a problem. Petaluma High would be a bit challenging because we've got that one room, and we still have the two doors in the front. I mean, it's old, from the 50s or 40s, I would assume.
Is anything in the current budget for any of what Ray's discussing?
Well, there are a couple of options, but for, for example, modernization for the facilities, we're not looking at modernization for a number of years down the road, and that doesn't help us for next year. Technically, capital facilities funds could be used because it's a problem due to growth and expansion of the school site. So it would fit within that realm to use those types of facilities to support that.
My opinion is I've not yet seen in eight years anything that costs $50,000 to finish. So, is that number a real number? Your speed line?
The equipment's $35,000. Most of the work I would do myself with my warehouse coordinator and my drivers.
What is our consultant cost just to get the okay from the state? Isn't that another $35,000 right there?
We'll have to, we will have to explore whether or not there's any DSA issues, changing the doors, we'll have to, we'll have to look at that.
I'm just thinking of the gym, changing the doors at gym, and that creates a huge.
Yeah, the doors at the gym was an access issue. So with that, we would have to have a structural engineer take a look at it and see if there's any DSA requirement. Because of the cost, it very well may not be DSA requirement for. And the two doors, I quoted panic bars on the doors, not standard doors, but actually the panic bars on the door. That was, that was why it's 15K.
Yeah, I don't mean to be the curmudgeon on that, I'm just serious. I've never seen anything that costs $50,000.
Curmudgeon for $50,000? I thought you'd tear down our portables. It was $60,000, $70,000, just to review it.
We're going to do a lot of the work ourselves.
Converged on the shipping containers.
Well, even if it's more, Troy, that, it sounds like it's the time that's coming.
We should at least find out.
At least look into it, and whatever the ADA or the access requirements are, they are, we just have to factor that in. But I think you make a good point that it's, seems feasible.
Not that that's not a real number.
My part, my, my part, I talked to the contractor and what we're going to do, and the equipment, I have a quote for it. I don't know about the other stuff. Sorry.
That's, nobody does.
Okay.
That's the problem. Well, Midge does, but it's a thing. It's like a sore point to support. Any other questions?
Is the new co-op a local co-op? Or do you do?
No, it's out of LA. Unfortunately, there are no local co-ops here for the commodities.
Wasn't that, I don't know, don't you guys use?
Bounty? We don't have like a.
Boston and the feds. So we can't use them because they don't?
It's difficult.
That's the gorg, gorg?
Yeah.
So we can't even use those even when we want to right now?
Yeah, that's a different kind of co-op, that's like a local co-op. Farmers are in the co-op.
They really couldn't support what we have to buy. Okay, they, they want to sell me a case of apples, that doesn't last. So, unfortunately, we have to, we do buy local produce through Sabasipol last year, which we did, especially with apples. But the co-op that we're in for commodities in Los Angeles is really the biggest one, and I think it's the best way to go, unfortunately. Most of the school districts around here want it that way.
And so still on these free and reduced lunches, is there anything that you provide? If I come to you and I say I'd like a bran muffin, whatever, something healthy, right? I still end up with the serving of green vegetables and the serving of yellow vegetables, and you have to provide it.
Yes, and the fruit, and then you take it and you drop it.
And then it makes it all three in one, it goes in.
Right, absolutely.
So that has a.
No. And we were certified though, they did come out and watch the program to make sure that it was certified. So the state came out, and they did their little thing, and they said, wow, you have the programs in mind, and we had the garbage cans right there, and they're watching.
And the kids just take what they want and?
That's, that's all they're permitted, their kids.
I'd just like to repeat it, so everybody can hear.
Thank you.
Is there any sort of cost posting children?
Quite a few of the schools have that right now. So we are working a little bit with that, but not all the schools have it.
I would just like to say I agree with Midge, you do a beautiful job. It's a thankless job. We appreciate it, I appreciate it, and other people do appreciate it, but I could probably tell you that, so thank you for it.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Midge, you're up.
All right. Well, it doesn't get any hotter off the press than it does today because we just got back from Sacramento this afternoon at about 2:30, and quickly, I tried as quickly to put together a meaningful presentation for you this evening, and, and most of, most of what I'm going to share with you really doesn't have any significant budget impact. Hold on a second. It's coming. All right, here we go. So today, we're going to talk a little bit about the STIRS and PERS issue out there. We're going to talk about local control funding formula. We're going to talk about the local control ability, accountability plan, the mandate dollars, and the reserve. So we're going to start off with the state retirement system. The STIRS rates, the STIRS rates have decreased for 2014-15 but are ratcheted up in subsequent years. So instead of hitting 9 percent, they're at 8.88 percent. So it's a slight decrease from where it was. The estimated decrease for the 14-15 budget is about $169,000. The employee rate, it's really important that people know that their rate is going up. Currently, employees contribute 8 percent. This year, it's going up to 8.15 percent. So they will see a reduction in their paycheck due to that rate change. Yes. One of our budget updates prior, they had talked about increasing our portion of it for the coming year in order to make it more effective in the long run. What was the discussion? Is that coming?
Yeah, that's the next chart with the, you have the sequences for the several years, or just the current?
No, just the current year.
But, yeah, it's going to 19 point, it's going to over 19 percent over the next several years. The PERS rate, that's currently going to be 8.88, will be over 19 percent in a few years, in several years.
For the district. For the district. And then the employees' rate will go to? Yes.
10 percent?
The employees' rate, I believe, is going up to 10 and a quarter percent.
Quarter.
Yeah, ultimately by 2021, which is huge. Yes, so that means between our 90 percent and their 10, we're close to 30 percent. Yes. That is correct. It is enormous. But there is a little bit of good news in that the 13-14 rate of return on the STIRS account was 18.66 percent. We don't always see that kind of rate of return on the investment side of the retirement. So it's a good year. You know, hopefully, if they have some good years like this, you know, maybe that will bring down, ratchet down what the employer and the employee have to contribute. And that would be really helpful because the increases are just out of sight.
Is this a decision that every district?
Not, not for STIRS. It, for STIRS to change their rate, it takes a legislative action, and they have not done a legislative action.
But the action taken this year is a multi-year. I mean, it puts in place the rate increase for the next several years. So it would take legislative action to undo that at this point. It did establish what the rate will be by legislation for the next several years.
Well, it's amazing what an 18.4, 19 years of return.
Well, due to an actuarial study. Absolutely.
So you're saying that's a right one.
Yeah, I thought it was not the right move because, I mean, just knowing from our RISI actuarial study, it changes significantly every two years when you do the review. They're doing annual reviews. It doesn't make sense to try to establish a rate to make the fund whole in 30 years. Trying to be whole by?
2046.
2046.
So that rate was locked by law for about 2004 or 2021?
No, 2021. Right, and so, but historically, it took an act of legislation to do it, and they haven't done it all these years, and I don't know, as long as Steve's been in the business.
It'll be a lot easier if it's a lower.
Yeah, well, we would hope so. For the PERS rate, there's no change, but the PERS rate goes up and down and adjusts every year. And it doesn't need an act of legislation? No, it does not. It just goes by the PERS board, and they make the adjustments based on their rate. And they also have a huge, you know, rate of return, 18.4 percent, which was great this year. Why am I so amazed that it is like that there's this huge increase in the STIRS? It's an unfunded liability at this point. So the 24, 25? Right, so basically, there's 18, no, $60 billion. I think it's about $60 billion upside down by the time they reach 246, and they, they said, we have to do something to start fully funding this. So the state is taking on a portion, the employees are taking on a portion of this liability, but the biggest portion of the liability is going to be resting on the school districts, the employer's side. And so as you see, we're going from 8 and a quarter percent to 19.1 percent by 2021 for the employer contribution. And do you pay it annually this month? Do we pay it annually? We pay it monthly as we process payroll. Every month as we process payroll. So, there was a lot of pushback on the fact that the STIRS rate increase was a surprise to districts, so that's why they ratcheted down 14-15. But it's pretty much washed out by the time you get to 16-17 because they increased the rates for those two years. So, they make it up somewhere. The local control funding formula, the implementation rates have decreased in out years. There's no statutory or constitutional guarantee for the funding model that they've presented to us. But that's correct. So it's.
But it's not even statute.
No. Excuse me?
So you have the no constitutional, but no statute?
Yeah, no statutory on how quickly they fund it. So right now, they're saying we would be fully funded by 2020-21, okay? But there's nothing in statute that says that they have to. So, anyway, so again, we're at the mercy of the state. The budget is based on conservative estimates by the Department of Finance, who works with the governor. The governor has been really very cautious in, in trying to be, rein in all the spending. I think he gets concerned that the minute that the legislature sees, you know, money, they want to spend it, and he's like, hold on, we have way too much debt, we have way too many problems out there, you know, reining it in. And he's been staying true to chopping down the wall of debt, which has been great. The Legislative Analyst Office, however, has a slightly rosier picture, and quite frankly, they've been a better guestimator of what the finances are going to look like. And if, if their estimate comes true, basically, what will happen is they will, the first call will be to pay down the remaining cash deferrals that we talked about at the last board meeting, where they deferred the cash from one year to the following year. There's just that one last piece. So the first call will be to totally eliminate that, and then there may be, they may raise back up the amount, the percent of the local control funding formula that was ratcheted down right now, they may ratchet it back up if their revenues exceed the Department of Finance estimate. Any discussion of additional levies for common core implementation? We're, we're going to get to that, but not just yet. So the local control accountability plan, changes are already in the works with the State Board of Education. This obviously was our first year of implementation, so there's, they're getting a lot of feedback about what worked, what didn't work, what was frustrating, changing the form, changing the template. Now that we've put out there what we propose we're going to do, they're saying, okay, we need to modify the document to show how you did it and what you, what it cost to do that, and whether or not you reached your benchmarks and your goals. So, and then there's also going to be audit requirements. Do they have that before? We haven't had. They said that it would become over. Yeah, so, let's see, and here we are with the one-time mandate reimbursement. So the budget at the very end surprised us and said, you will receive $66 per student, per ADA, and that equates for the entire. And that equates for the entire district about four hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars. Well, that's the good news. And that's part of the wall of debt that should be paid off. And that per ADA amount we funded, doesn't matter whether or not you had claims into the state or not. So, so school districts or charters who didn't have any mandate reimbursements in the pipeline to be paid off are, everyone is getting this. I know. It's interesting. Um, and they are highly recommending, but not requiring, that it be used for common core implementation because there is no specific common, additional common core money at this time being given to districts outside of what we already have, which was one point, one point two five million.
And our intent is to use additional.
Do they just cut your check?
Um, yeah, we'll be receiving it sometime later this year. So, um, that's the good news. But the bad news is, is they want to tell us how to spend the money that we're being reimbursed for things that we already did way, way in the past. So the reserve requirement. Prop forty-four, as I shared with you at the last board meeting, will be on the November ballot. And it will be creating an ex, a revise, a revision to the Schwarzenegger, um, uh, reserve. And it will be called the rainy day fund. And it would establish a maximum reserve at the district of two times the required reserve. So right now, our required reserve is three percent for our reserve for economic uncertainties. That means that we would be able to hold in reserve a maximum of six percent without coming to the board or the board making some sort of commitment of those reserves. If we exceed the reserves, we can go to the county office of education for a waiver. And it's going to be complicated. Um, there are those who say that the criteria that establishes when this kicks in is rarely ever going to happen. And then there's those who are saying, wait a minute, what about local control? What, where does the board have their voice or the district have their voice in establishing what they think is a reasonable reserve? And especially given where we just came from. Basically, school districts around the state saved the state from an unbelievable downturn, uh, impact of unemployment. I mean, people, districts, because they have reserves, were actually able to stave off adding to the unemployment figure. Our district did as much as we could to keep people in, in jobs during that time. Um, if, if we don't have that buffer, then the state also won't have anywhere to cut. And we will instantaneously hit an unbelievable unemployment rate. Because we won't be able to do, we won't have any options. Um, so that brings me to my last point. And I thought it was really a pretty funny little story that they shared today about boiling frog. So if the pot of water is boiling and the frog jumps in, he's going to jump right out. So right now, we really don't see that this would have a negative impact to us. So, you know, you, you put the pot of water on the stove and it's kind of room temperature. The frog is in there, you crank up the heat a little bit, and before you know it, the water's too hot and the frog is dead and you don't have any options. So there'll be no jumping out of that pot of boiling water. Once we go down this path and it becomes statute and part of a constitutional amendment. So that is the concern about the state and the constitution actually dictating what the amount of reserve a district can hold. Um, so getting to the budget again, there's no real significant change or update since they actually passed the budget. And we wouldn't meet the forty-five day window. So we, we prepared this presentation to tell you there is really no big update. But we did want to provide you with some information about the budget. So when you look at the distribution of unrestricted budget, which is the part of the budget that we actually can really control, the restricted side is where you talk about special ed programs and things that we don't have a lot of control over. So when you look at the, the broad picture, um, you can see the relative percent of how we spend our money. Sixty-one percent of the budget is spent on certificated compensation. And that includes statutory benefits and health benefits in this pie chart. Classified compensation is about eighteen percent. Management, nine percent. Um, books and supplies, we spend two percent of our budget on books and supplies. Services, which are utilities primarily and other contract legal audit type expenses is about eight percent. Oh, other post-employment benefits. So other post-employment benefits is, for example, when we, we still have a component that we are paying for retiree health benefits, and that's dwindling down. Right now, I think in our budget, it's about twenty-seven thousand dollars. It's pretty minimal. However, that also includes, uh, when we do the supplemental early retirement benefits, which we provided to our employees over the last several years. That's what that is. Yes.
Those are ongoing maintenance and facilities and stuff in there? Just the maintenance, like, non-projects or anything, and that services?
No. No, that's spread out among our classified compensation and, and services, um, primarily through contract out or, and, and supplies. It's a component of supplies. They come down to that bucket.
You're saying the houses and classes, and then it would sub out to spurge and be resources?
Yes.
Where is that? Where's, where do you have that?
Services would be contracting out.
So that's what it is? It's all services?
Right. But it's utilities.
Unless it's in-house, yeah, yeah, in-house, we'd possibly have compensation.
Right.
I'm talking about outside, it's all services?
Right. The, the biggest component, though, of services, utilities fall, yeah, falls in that bucket. Okay? Looking at it another way, and I kind of did a trend analysis from oh seven, oh eight prior to when we went into the Great Recession. And this really kind of shows that everything kind of really remains same, even though on a relative basis, uh, you know, certificated compensation, all of those buckets pretty much stayed relatively the same throughout the years. What did change was the percent of total compensation as a percent of the unrestricted budget. In oh seven, oh eight, you can see that it was just over eighty-seven percent. And then in oh eight, oh nine, it took a significant jump. And the reason why it took a significant jump up to ninety percent is we, that was the first year of a total freeze on all expenses. So in that year, we spent over ninety percent just on salaries and benefits. We cut off all spending for, um, supplies. Anything that we did not have to do, we did not do in that year. Um, the following year, we eased up a bit and, and compensation went just under eighty-eight percent. You can see it's been fluctuating a little bit. And in fourteen fifteen, um, just under eighty-nine percent of our total unrestricted budget is, is for people. Salaries and benefits, employees of the district. That does not include any contracting out or anything else. It's just people. So when you think about it, the fact that you only have control over eleven percent of the unrestricted budget, that's not a whole lot of money, um, to have a lot of wiggle room. So I just wanted to show that, um-
Off, off your head.
Yes.
Maybe Steve knows this just because of his length here of the district. But in the nineties, do we have an idea of what percentage or the first part of this century? As far as, does it pretty much stay in the eighty-six to eighty-seven percent?
I think the biggest difference is when we've looked at it historically, going back, we're looking at total budget and not just unrestricted. Unrestricted. And then it was about eighty percent. We're looking at the total budget.
Okay.
Um, so eighty, I don't know, it's a high amount in the unproportional. The eighty-eight point seven two percent includes what's in the budget and is employed members. We incorporated in the budget, um, basically, the district's proposal on the table. Uh, the two and a half percent, um, for all employees, uh, plus the five hundred dollars in lieu of benefit, um, one-time dollars in lieu of increase in health insurance is incorporated in the district's adopted budget. So that's where it's going up to eighty-eight point seven.
Any other questions on this one?
So that considers a three percent reserve?
No, this, this is just looking at what the district is planning to spend or has spent. And what the salaries and benefits represent of that total pressure. That's all this represents. It doesn't get into the reserve factor at all.
And Mike, what are our current restrictions on reserves? Are there any legislative, legislative plan of what, which are current restrictions on reserves?
Nothing.
Three percent.
Other than we have to have three percent as a minimum.
So if the state tries to squeeze us down, it's just making us more vulnerable to the state. Instead of variances or variables of the state, we can't weather storms like we're going to.
And, and it becomes difficult. Um, as you know, we could have a swing in, for example, in enrollment for whatever reason. And that has a huge impact on where you're at. So when you're looking at your out-years, if you, if there's something else happening, happening in the community. For example, Greenbrier, when they closed down those apartments and they modified them, they're no longer low-income housing. They've been modified for, you know, upper income or higher income. And, and that changed what happened at McDowell within the year. And we get funded based on prior year, but that had an impact on, on the current year, just like that. So having such a small reserve can really, it's just, the fiscal crisis management assistance team is recommending that districts have about a seventeen percent reserve. I know. Yeah.
And typically, what if we had, though?
What's up, guys?
That's, that's-
Next chart.
That's one of my next slides here. Oh, this, this, before we get there, though, I broke out. This, this slide is kind of a repeat of the earlier one. But I did break out what, I did break out what health and welfare started out in oh seven, oh eight. It was eight point six six percent of the budget. When you look at fourteen fifteen, it's just under thirteen percent. So that's a fifty percent increase over where we were just a short time ago. And it's a huge impact. And now, when you add on to that, the STIRS and PERS factor, it's becoming extremely difficult to find dollars to provide our employees with raises. Because that's an immediate take off the table.
Well, and there, and there are confusion there.
Right. And so there, it's a lose-lose situation for everybody. Excuse me. So a reserve as a percent of expenses, you, the, the bottom part is where we were in oh six, oh seven. We were just under ten percent. And you can see, by the time we hit nine, ten, and ten, eleven, and eleven, twelve, we were twelve and a half percent, over twelve and a half percent as a reserve. And those were the years in particular where we were cash lean. Those are the years where they were taking all of the, the money that we were supposed to get, the actual cash, and deferring it to the following year. So in those years, we had a huge reserve. And most of the time, our reserve was eighty percent. Our cash was about eighty percent of what the ending fund balance was. In those years, it was about twenty percent.
Wait, wait, wait.
She was, she was right. It was twenty, in those years, we had twenty percent cash and eighty percent IOU from the state. Or we had a large reserve on paper, but we had no cash to spend. It was all IOUs.
Kind of like the COLAs there was promised.
Right. The deferral of the COLAs.
Yeah. Well, the, well, those were the cuts. But the actual, even, even when they calculated what they owed us, they were not paying us the cash until the following year.
Um, so to go back to the, just quick-
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm having a hard time hearing you because there's some chatter out here. Yes.
The, because that brought up the deferred, the deferrals. You talked about the wall of debt.
Yes.
And that was the cash portion that they had delayed and there was like a ripple effect.
Yes.
But then there was the COLAs that they didn't fund.
Right.
And that's what they say they will try to get us back to hold.
Under the local controls funding formula.
From two thousand seven, eight, by twenty twenty-one, but there's no law that says they have to.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, just. And then there was a third thing.
Mandates, mandate defense.
And then there was like three things that they hadn't funded. And I just wanted to make sure where we were on that. So the mandates are partially with this sixty-six dollars a person.
With, with the local control, when things had happened with implementation of local control was, the deficits were limited. The revenue of the deficits were limited. They said, this is how much you would have received if COLAs were funded, and now that's the target. And so they're trying to get us back to by twenty twenty-one, plus COLAs, uh, for the years between now and twenty twenty.
Right. Plus, plus the years from two thousand seven, eight.
Right.
Because we don't, we don't have funding now.
That's how they determined the target was, if they had paid us COLAs, this is how much you would receive.
Right.
We can't give you there anytime soon. So our targets were either in twenty twenty-one, plus the COLAs between now and then. So that target would continue to grow by COLAs each and every year.
Right.
This year, the COLA was over twenty-five percent.
And what was the actual cost of it?
Uh, one point five percent.
Yes, it's-
It wasn't.
Yeah. So, yeah, we're not actually keeping up.
CPI was, I think, one point five and COLAs was twenty-five.
Yes.
That's what they funded.
Yes. That's what they're recognizing as-
The increasing cost of new business schools.
Yeah.
But obviously, the state is even close to keeping up because if I take your numbers on the healthcare, you said it went up like almost fifty percent over six years, it's probably eight percent a year. When they're doing COLAs, it's like one, one point five.
But again, that's only a portion, you know, it's a small portion.
It's like, it's like, I mean, they're losing ground.
Yeah, but supposedly, the cost of health insurance is built into that red basket of what the school district purchased, same as what they calculate this consumer price index increase for consumers. Um, so that twenty-five supposedly takes into consideration the increasing cost of health insurance.
And the reality is that teachers and that cost of service is paying more on the paycheck for them.
Yes.
That it's just this big round of, I mean, the state's not making up that difference.
The district and employees have paid a considerable amount over the last several years. Well, fifty percent increase, the percentage increase with employees is higher because we started with a lot less amount. As you can see, while the amount over that same period of time, that district, so since oh seven, oh eight, the districts increased their cost on a per-monthly basis for employees by three hundred ninety-four dollars and sixty-five cents for those employees who get the health insurance. Per, that's per count, per employee who gets health insurance. But the employees at the same time have increased their cost. This is going into next year under the district's proposal by three hundred sixty-two dollars and twenty-five cents.
Seven, so more.
Yeah. That the cost of health insurance has gone up since oh seven, oh eight.
So the, the other thing I wanted to share with you, so, um, right now, um, I'm sorry, my phone is not working. Um, if you look at, um, twelve, thirteen, and then more current, you can see that our fund balance has been going down. Um, obviously, in thirteen, fourteen, it went down because we, we were deficit spending. We added back all of our days, included five, um, student days and three staff development days for our, um-
No.
Okay. Um, and then also, um, this proposed increase that we have for fourteen, fifteen, um, of the two point five percent and the one-time five hundred dollars per full-time employee is also creating deficit spending. And so you can see that the fund balance is going down. And for fourteen, fifteen, at our adopted budget, we're at six point four four percent of, um, exceeding our, uh, of our unappropriated reserve, I'm sorry. So, um-
Close to what potential.
Yes. We're actually close to what they, if they implement it, we're just point four four percent above what they would require. So, um, is there any questions on this? I think that's, that's all for it. So, let's get down to it.
This is an agenda item, so if there's anybody who would like to speak specifically to this report, we're going to have public comment right after this with these cards, but if we would like to speak specifically to this.
I just have a question.
Come on.
Come on.
Do you want to put the rostrum up there?
Yeah.
Is that what that's called?
Something you say though?
Podium. I would call it podium.
There it is. Kim Sharp, Pedaluma Federation of Teachers, president. I also teach at Casa Grande High School. I'm also a parent in the district. On one of the last slides, when you were talking about the reserve, can you speak to when we took the first furlough days in the district? When did that start on that chart?
'09-'10. So in '09-'10, we reduced three days.
Okay. And the reserve was?
In '09-'10, the reserve increased from 6.5 million to 7.7.
And then the next year, we took five?
The next year, we took five more days, and the reserve increased to 8.138.
And then we took?
The next year, we gave back two days, or three days, we gave back three days, and the reserve went up 200,000.
And then we took?
The next year, we took the three days back again, and the reserve still, even when taking three days back, the reserve still was down 1.5 million. Went down 1.5 million after giving back days. And last year, we gave back, we gave all eight days back, and the reserves went down less than 400,000. The average reserve in the state has been at least noted as approximately 17%. Pedaluma City Schools' reserve at this time, oh yeah, is, the end of '13-'14 is under 10%.
Okay, so, but between, you're saying, what was the first year again? I'm sorry. '09-'10?
'09-'10 was the first year, yeah.
So between '09-'10 and this last school year, we fluctuated between three and eight furlough days, and that was everybody, not just the teachers. And we still were sitting on?
There was no cash in there.
Right, but we had. No, no, I get it. I'm just clarifying. Okay, thank you.
So Kim, while I have you standing, since we're going to be hearing from the public, I'm gonna kind of put you in charge.
Oh.
Because I think most of these relate to basically, because I read through them, the same general. So if there's anybody who, of the seven speaker cards that I have who don't agree with that necessarily, what I was gonna ask him to do would be to prioritize, or if nothing else, tell me, would you like to be in the front or the back?
I'll go last.
You go last. Okay. And I'm just gonna randomly pick, if that's okay?
Is that okay with you guys? We're good. Sure, okay. We have, we have a dad with a small child that needs to go first, so.
But that's in the highlight of the meeting.
I know. He's awfully cute.
Can I leave? Sorry. How, can you, sir?
Todd, Todd says.
Well, Assad, I happen to have you.
All right.
We got a thing going on. It's okay. I'm not gonna read the very boring and legal verity, but everybody knows the rules, right?
I hope so.
Read, speak, talk, know the rules, sign, and, and sign. Stay with me, okay? He was very proud of his jellyfish, we have to show him.
Welcome, Bodhi.
Thank you.
Bodhi. Bodhi, welcome, Bodhi.
And stand, stand. So.
Yes, I'm sure if anybody else wants.
So, you know, one of the things about the, oh, that's better, thank you, common core is appeals to reason. Oh, it's, yeah, it's obvious, you can see. Okay, okay, okay. Appeals to reason, so. Anyway, so this would be with my son who's on the way, the pathos part of presentation. So I used to think that I was good with money, reasonably good. I had my own merit package, so I was pretty good. But then as someone says, life happens, and I went through separation, some medical expenses unforeseen, the last year and a half, bankruptcy, last year and a half, I had to go check the cash base six times to get a day advance. Of course, since 2007, we really haven't had the equivalent of meaningful raise for COLA. And so I want to keep this short and simply ask you to ask the district, direct the district, to come back to negotiating table, because we do not want to pay for the district. We want to be responsible, we want a fair and equitable contract. And fair to the district, but also fair to us, so that we do not have to continue to endure the pain of the last several years. Because when that pain comes on us, and of course, my child is a representative of that, when the pain comes on us, then the pain comes on to him. And that's not fair. Thank you.
Daryl Orton. He's fine. Doing better than I. Anyways, my name is Daryl Orton, and for those of you that don't know me, I'm the coordinator of the workability program here in the Pedaluma City School District. Are you all familiar with that program? Okay. So, from our point of view, from my point of view, I've been in the district for over 25 years, 20 years being the director of this wonderful program for our special ed students. And kind of perception is reality with all these people here tonight. And our perception, my perception, I'm gonna speak for myself, and I think maybe other people agree, but my perception is, we don't really feel like we have been treated fairly. There is definitely low staff morale within the school district. I work at three or four high schools, and I talk to people every day, and it isn't all your fault, it's the economy and what's been going on in the world. But I'll tell you what, the staff morale is very, very low. And that's why all these people are here tonight, to support us as teachers and professionals. We don't want to have any conflicts. I was very disappointed. I went to observe the negotiation process, which, you know, we were invited to. And I went, we went in there, and we ended up not negotiating. And I'm thinking, well, I wanted to observe the process, and it looks like the process is either broken or doesn't work. And then it got to the point where they started talking about lawyers. And at that point, I'm thinking, this is ridiculous. We have a school district, we're all working together for a common good of our kids. We don't need to bring lawyers in. What we need to do is go back to the bargaining table and bargain truthfully and faithfully. I know when we start out, well, we start at 7%, 7.5. We went down to 4.5, and then to four. The district, I think, was 2.5, started with, started two, went to 2.5, and that's where the district is. So we really haven't even had much discussion about that, because we really haven't had a chance to even negotiate yet. So I would just hope we can all come back to the table, and hopefully, it's an open negotiation. Hopefully, that any administrator that would like to observe it could observe it. Any counselor, any teacher, anybody from the public, I think we need to have open observation of what's going on, so that people can feel that they have the trust in the district, that they really appreciate what you guys are doing. And I know you guys are in a tough spot, but we are too. And 2.5% to me is a slap in the face personally. You know, I'd rather take nothing than 2.5. I'm, you know, it's really 2.5%? If you go to any other school district in California, if you ask when they've had raises, and I think more have had raises recently than we have, I don't think anybody's settled for 2.5%. I think at least 3%, 4%, 5%. And I think we're all asking for is 4, and I just think that's fair. And I'm a little frustrated, but. And then the last thing is, teachers sometimes don't feel appreciated. I don't know if you're aware, but in the past 10 years, I've written grants for the workability program, amounting to over a million dollars. And have I even gotten a thank you from anybody in the district?
Thank you. I want to remind everybody of two things. Not reading this. One of them is, in public comment, the board is not in a position to have dialogue about, yeah, I think you all know that, right? Second piece, when we're talking specifically about negotiations and things at the table, we also, there will be no comment about that from the board. That's for the negotiating team. So sometimes, a really hard part about this job is to sit here and not be able to respond when you really feel like you want to, or maybe you feel like you could clarify something. And unfortunately, this isn't the thing for that. So when we sit up here, sometimes it feels like we're looking kind of stupid, clungcandily, because we're just sitting here like that. I want you to understand the reason for that, if you want, okay? Genie, and I believe it's Pragsel.
Good evening. I'm Genie Pragsel, and I teach at McDowell School, and I'm a parent of a fourth, fifth grader, McKinley. Some of the previous speakers already touched on some of the points I was going to make, about 2.5% being a slap in the face. I do also, I want to let you know a little bit about me as a representative of all of these people out here in blue. I'm not just a third grade teacher that is really working hard to move our kids forward. I am also on the technology committee and working on writing a plan. I have been a BERT. I have run ELAC meetings for years. I'm a bilingual teacher at my school and communicate with our Spanish Latino population. I'm an administrative designated when my principal is not there. I am out of my classroom or trying to juggle about five things at once, teaching at the same time. I spend my summers doing training that I don't get paid for, and I pay childcare for, so I can do that. And all of these people out here do those same things. And I think a lot of you guys don't know that, because you see us as these people in this classroom, and we're teaching, and we're getting tests, and we're getting turning in grades. Well, our profession goes way beyond those little borders. I want to really talk to you tonight about the stress that teachers are feeling, because you need to know. And I'm worried, not only for myself as a professional, but for my child, who is going to continue as a student in this district. And I know, he's a teacher, was a little kid, and is a single parent, it's just as stressed as I am. And I don't think it's fair, and I understand what the numbers are and how you have to balance and look at the budget. But I've also been on negotiating teams, and I've looked at those budgets, and I know that you can find money in a lot of different places that you don't always see. And I know that you can be very creative and find your money when you need to. And I'm telling you that this really needs to be your priority. I had to go into my savings account today to buy shoes for my son. He's on the 10-year-old All-Star team, and they're on the verge of winning the section, and I'm gonna ask my parents to borrow money to go get a hotel room to watch them play. And that is not right. I've been teaching for 20 years. We should not have these kind of struggles, and we do. And school's gonna start, and my paycheck's not gonna enough. I'm struggling to put money on the, food on the table, as I imagine everybody else here is, and you guys need to know. And yeah, maybe, maybe our reserve is not as high as we want it to be, but maybe this is a little bit more important right now. Because it's not good to have teachers that are stressed out. It's not good to have kids who are working with stressed out teachers, and we can't help it. If we don't know how food's going on the table, or how our car is gonna get fixed, or how we're gonna get to a family function, or how we're gonna get presents for our kids for Christmas, we can't really be making our profession our priority. So I'm gonna ask you, you say, I understand you can't say anything about what's being negotiated, but I understand that just as we talk to our negotiating team about what our priorities are and what we want to argue, I'm asking you guys, as a voter, as a parent, as a member of this community, to talk to your negotiating team and make that a priority.
Thank you. Rachel, I'm sorry, I can't.
Goldmes.
Thank you.
I'm Rachel Goldmes. I've been teaching for 10 years, and six years in this district. And in this district, I've taught Spanish. I've taught Spanish for native speakers. I've taught life skills. I've taught home economics. I have taught culinary arts. I've taught everything that you have asked me to teach. And happily, I've happily done those things. And I really enjoy my job and enjoy my profession. And I enjoy the students, and I think that's why we're all here. I don't think we're here, you know, we, I think that there's an image of a teacher as a self-sacrificer, and I think that we have been sacrificing since 2007. And I think that we've done our best to sacrifice for our students so that we could maintain jobs, keep class sizes at a decent level, and keep supplies coming to our students. But as you've heard from the people before me, we are hurting now. And every time we're hurting, it's hurting our students. I've been teaching for 10 years now, and I have the option to go to other districts. And if I were to go to other districts, I would have an increase of $10,000 in my salary for my family. And that's, but I love Pedaluma, and I want to stay here. And I want this to be our home district, and it is our hometown. But I have to think about my family too. And I would like to urge you to think about, you know, the passionate people that you have before you, the people who are writing grants. I've written $60,000 in grants in my six years here at this district. I've built a garden, an organic garden at Kettleworth, the first ever. I, you know, these, we are people who don't just stay within the confines of our curriculum. We give the most of ourselves for our students. And I feel like that passion needs to be sustained, and it's hard to sustain that when we don't feel a level of professional respect and a level of financial respect in the same terms. So I just really urge you as a board to urge the negotiations to start up again, so we can start a conversation. We're all professionals here, and we want to continue that professional relationship. Thank you.
Mr. Doug Cox, please.
Hello, everybody. I feel like I know most of you already from either teaching or coaching. So I'm Doug Cox, and I've been teaching the district now for 22, going on 23 years. I teach math at Pedaluma High School. I have two kids who go to Pedaluma High School. So I've been around for a while. I definitely want to echo the sentiments of many of my colleagues who've been up here already. But I also want all of you to think about this right now. In the 22 years, Steve, you and I joined about the exact same time there, we've had different superintendents come and go. And I know through Chuck and Carl, I mean, there was a lot of, you know, a lot of good times, if budgets were good and all that. And honestly, from a morale point of view as a teacher, it's starting with Greta's, we'll call it regime. Things have not been so good. It's been really rough. Honestly, it feels like a really us versus them mentality. District admin against the teachers, parents versus the kids. I don't know what it is, but we're all highly educated, intelligent people here, and we think that you guys can offer teachers a better deal than what's being offered right now. And that's just a fact. We think you can. The money's there, and you need to make it happen, and there needs to be negotiation taking place. I too was there last Monday, and obviously, I couldn't believe it when negotiations just stopped and that was it. And now I guess, I don't know what's going on, mediation or whatever. I would say to the board, I think the district admin negotiating team, and our team should be in there tomorrow, working out a deal and offering us a fair deal, and not what we keep getting, the 2.5% and the 500. I saw in the district admin salaries, I saw something about a $2,700 longevity bonus. I saw a $600 yearly iPhone allowance. I see all this money going out there. I'm curious, I'm not, how does a longevity bonus, where does that come from? I think I'm doing one of those, 20 years. I'm a follow, I'm a math guy, and I'm looking at some of these graphs over here, and I'd like to have my AP stats class to show them this leading looks like, because they're not, they're not showing the true picture. They, they're not, they really aren't. And I just think right now, we're at a real tipping point. Are we gonna move forward here and get back together, being in all this together? Or is this us versus them? We have to just mistrust the district? And, you know, what's it gonna be? I don't know. But I'll tell you what, a clear signal will be getting in that, in a room in the next three days and working out a deal. in the next three days and working out a deal. And truly negotiating, and not just lowballing us again on these numbers. It's ridiculous. And we deserve better than that. Our students deserve better than that. We've been putting up this for a long time. I looked it up today, inflation's been 10.5% over the last six years. 10.5%. Meanwhile, we're still making the same amount of money. We just got some days back last year. We've had to pay more for healthcare. It just goes on and on and on and on. And yet I see Sturges goes up 18.7% this year. I saw State is $4.3 billion in the black for once. Where's our share of that? I don't know where it is. It's just, we're just getting, we're just getting lowballed. And I'm sick of it and tired of it, and something needs to change. And I hope you can direct the negotiating team to get together in a room and hammer out a deal that's fair to all of us. Thank you.
So I've already introduced myself. I still am Kim Sharp, president of the union. And I just have to start by saying that I am just so proud to be a teacher in this district right now. I do have a letter here from our chief negotiator, Sandra Larson, who, um, don't boo in his, she's in Sweden right now. I know, I'm living vicariously through her. And I think I'm just going to actually hand it to you with the attachment. I, I think at this point, because I think so many of my members have spoken so eloquently to all of the points that she has here. There are a couple more, but I think it's just something that you, as a board, need to take a look at. I just want to say this. I've been in the district, well, teaching for 21 years in the district, 20. I'll be going on my 22nd year of, of teaching next year. So like Doug, I, I've been here through several superintendents. I've been involved with the union since my second year here in the district. This is not something that's brand new to me. I have enjoyed the collegial relationship that we've had with the district. I joined the negotiating team about nine-ish years ago, I think. I don't know, it all runs together. And have, we've always been able to, to reach a settlement. We've always been able to talk things through. And things have changed. Lots of things in the world, in the economy, in Petaluma. As I've said many a times in the last year, it's a new day. It's a new way of doing business. It's a new team. And I think that in the best interests of our students, because I'm also a parent in the district, the best interest of our students at this point, we just want to go back to the table. We want to iron this out. We think that our members, the public, the administration, anybody, should be able to see what we're doing, because I think much of education is a mystery to people unless you're in it. And I just really think that that's really what we're here for. And, and what we were, you know, hoping for on last Monday was that we would try to get the best deal for everybody involved. I don't know if you saw, the backs of our shirts say, "We're students and teachers come first." And we really firmly believe that students, notice that that was first. That, that's the core of why we're here. And we have such amazing teachers and support staff in our district. And the fact that we're at a possible impasse for a second year in a row, that's pretty sad. I, I think we can, we can find a better way. And we're ready, and that's really our message to you. We're ready, we were ready last week. We'll be ready when our chief negotiator gets back from Sweden. And we just, we just wanted you to know that, you know, we're open, we're, we're ready, we've studied the budget, and we just want to get this done. Because we want to start school, two of our, our schools are starting tomorrow. And we want our students to have the best experience possible. And that's really why we're here. So thank you for your time, and I have these for you.
Thank you. Okay. Any more public comments? Close public comments? I am going to offer out with no strings attached to a quick break. Two minutes left. We'd love you to stay, we really would. But I'm going to give you an opportunity to get some dinner, do whatever else you need to do. We'll take a two-minute break, all right?
Thank you.
Thank you, President.
You are, you're incredible. You did a great job, so thank you. That's a funny picture. Yeah. Yeah, no, you did awesome.
How you doing, young lady, enjoying your summer?
Got a girl.
Staying awake, working, doing a good job. Hi.
In the neighborhood, that's singing all night long? Right, exactly. Keeping everybody up all night long, huh?
Room to la. All right, Mr. Sturtevant, it's decision time, staying or going? Mr. Pritchett? Pritchett, staying or going? Come on, make a call.
I'm not there to filibuster this meeting, Dave.
There we go, very good.
Oh, come on.
You got it. All righty, we're back. Report on activities from correspondence of school board members. This is summertime. This needs to not be a dinner during the summertime. I have nothing to report on. Does anybody have anything to report on the court?
I have some emails that I will share in the closed session.
Oh, I've walked through Petaluma High several times, and it's still there. All right, so we didn't have any changes to the agenda with regard to pulling any consent items, so I will go ahead and take item K, approval of the consent agenda by consolidated motion.
So? A second.
All those in favor of the consent agenda as it flies? All right, aye, opposed? Very good. Hey, Kim, would you mind doing me just a quick favor? Just ask them to go about 10 yards back.
I just did.
Thank you very much. No, no, as long as you did already, that's great. Thank you. Well, we've got an employment report we need to talk about.
Yes, do you want to?
Well, let me take the brochure. Okay. And I'm looking for a second.
Second.
Okay, uh, the employment report.
I'm pitch-hitting for our baseball fan. Who is Ron, of course.
Wait, they see at the All-Star game?
Uh, no, he's got visitors, he's got visitors from...
Okay, this is a quick sidebar. I did tell Mr. Rose that if we ever scheduled a board meeting, again, on an All-Star game night, somebody's going down. This is like the third year. In my eight years, the third time where I turn around like, oh my gosh. I'm sorry.
You're going to need to, to make sure.
Sure, there's going to be a bylaw.
Right, the bylaw, that's...
So we're going to doubt the budget, Troy. Take a look at July.
No kidding.
All right, there we go. Thank you, I apologize. I heard south. So the employment report, please.
Okay, so I, it's my pleasure to introduce two new employees, two new assistant principals this evening. And I'll start with Casa Grande and Nikki Samuel. Come on up. So Nikki is joining us from, um, she's been a technology teacher at Black Diamond High School. And I happen to have a, a handbook that she put together for Black Diamond High School, sitting on my desk, that I'm going to get her to do for Petaluma High, uh, Petaluma City Schools. Black Diamond High School is in Pittsburgh in Contra Costa County. She was also a computer teacher at Pittsburgh High School. She was also a business communication teacher, computer skills, and web design at Roosevelt High School in Seattle, Washington. So she is bringing some fabulous skills to Petaluma. She has a bachelor's degree in business administration and marketing from the University of Iowa, and a master's degree in secondary education from the University of Nevada at Reno, and administrative credential from the University of San Francisco. She was instrumental in getting a college-going culture going at Pittsburgh High School, where only 20% of the graduates graduated with A through G. And was instrumental in getting those requirements pushed across the school and increasing the number of students who were graduating A through G-ready. She is an avid tennis player who loves all things outdoors. And she is living in Tiburon with her three sons, who are young, five, six, and 11. So welcome, Nikki.
Thank you very much, that was a wonderful welcome. And I feel like I don't have to say anything now, because she's pretty much said it all. But I'm just really, really excited to be part of the Petaluma Schools' school district. And I'm very excited to be the newest member of Casa Grande and the wonderful administrative team that I've met. And really looking forward to a great year. I'm looking forward to, I mean, my passion is technology and data. So I'm really looking forward to helping to support the teachers in integrating the new technology that they're going to be getting. And I'm really excited. Thanks for giving me this opportunity.
Welcome.
I have to tell you, there's a lot of teachers living tennis in the district.
All right.
Okay. So our next new assistant principal is Tracy Bass. And there she is, who will be at Petaluma High School. Let me tell you a little bit about her. She is coming from, she is currently, or was currently, she was, not currently, but she was, the assistant principal at Vintage High School in Napa. She was in charge of instruction and student activities. Before that, she was the dean of assessment accountability and student activities, also at Vintage. She was also an interim vice principal and English and avid teacher at Central High School in Fresno. She has a bachelor's degree in communication and speech and English from Cal State Fresno. She has a master's degree in educational administration from National University. She loves to travel, goes to all sporting events, and she's another Giants fan.
Got my goal record.
Let's see, she is eager to join Petaluma High School and really looking forward to sharing her passion for kids and bringing her expertise as both an English teacher and an avid tennis teacher to Petaluma. So she comes from a family of teachers and takes great pride in continuing that tradition for her family. So Tracy Bass.
Thank you. Gosh, that's amazing, you haven't said about yourself. I just want to say, I'm very honored to be here. I grew up from Clovis, California, from a small town. So I love the small-town feel, mentality, and it is an honor. I'm glad I came on the side of the county, and I can't wait to start the team so far. We just had a great time. And it's just interesting, I'm like, kind of get, get what's going on. But, you know, as a former coach, I think there's just a few things I kind of, you know, kind of working with kids, and kids, you know, I'm just eager to kind of get with the kids and start getting that college-going culture and building that morale even better than this. So we'll get there. All right, thank you, thank you very much.
You have other fine folk to meet?
That's it, those are our new folks for tonight.
So I've got a motion and a second. All those to say? Aye, aye. Welcome aboard. With all the rights and responsibilities that means. Yeah, no, seriously, the welcome, we're very glad to have you. You're both, the two of you that are here are both blessed in the sense that you're going to some pretty cool schools and some really fine folk that work there, including you, Loxie. I spend every Christmas in Clovis. If you like Clovis, you like Petaluma, it's very similar.
You love the fog.
I do. I like my family, David. But on behalf of the board, if anybody else wants to chime in, we're just really glad to have you. And we put a lot of responsibility on you, and looking forward to shoulder. So thank you for being here.
Those are tough jobs, thanks for taking them.
Those are tough jobs.
Yeah.
Let's move on to the other whole items, which we have aplenty. What did I hear, seven resolutions still? Nine resolutions still?
And item number two, the, just the Williams Statement Quarterly Uniform for Late Discussion. There's, there are no...
Uh, okay, let's go to Resolution 141509, Board of Education, Petaluma City Elementary and Petaluma Joint Union High School Districts, County, Sonoma, State, California, recognizing achievements of the Petaluma Valley Rotary Club on their 40th anniversary to service its students, its schools, and the community.
So? Check in.
I, any discussion on that?
Just, just to share the fact that Petaluma Valley Rotary brings programs to this district on an annual basis. And we appreciate all three of the Rotary Clubs that we have in our community and their support to the schools. And it's a great opportunity to recognize Petaluma Valley Rotary Club for their 40 years of existence.
Bunch of good folks. All those in favor? Aye, aye. All right, they are officially recognized for 40 years. And thanked. Purchase orders, item 600, business services. Do I have anybody who needs to recuse themselves from purchase orders? And while I'm asking, also, do I have item 7 with expense expenditures? No, I just want to see, like, that, I'm playing first, and then I'll figure out. You're okay on 6, not 7? You're good on both?
I'll just recue myself from both.
Oh, this one, which one? I'm waiting, it's okay. You're not, so I'm okay with 6.
Yes.
Okay, you're good?
Yeah.
On both? All right, so for item 6, purchase orders, I would ask for a motion to accept the purchase order.
A second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, that goes for all. And then item 7, we're going to recuse the, and that's listed as expenditures. So I've got a motion on listed expenditures. It's going to have to be you. Make second, all those in favor? Aye, opposed. So that's a 30, 31 and 1. Okay, item 8, and this is court, kind of my, is Ray still here?
No.
Comment regarding Ray and $50,000. Award of bid, number 0311. Award of bid, number 0314, authorization to American Modular Systems, Inc. in the amount of $362,800. Be a secondary capital fund, facilities funds, chief business official to approve changeovers up to 10%, except the work is being completed.
So. Second.
So, as you know, the district is taking back the SCO special ed programs. This is for the installation of the permanent building being installed at Casa Grande to house those programs. So it's two classrooms.
High school age kids?
Yes.
Yes.
Special education.
Just curious, I know that we've done approvals on the architect for this and some other stuff. At some point, can we get up what the dollar is so we have in our head?
Yes.
The total cost? Because it, I think that the public needs to know.
A huge difference in the bid, by the way. Huge difference in the bid.
Yeah.
Yeah, two bids, yes.
Double.
Yeah. Out of curiosity, I mean, if we were to, and I understand that now we're taking it back, we kind of need this pretty much now, right? So there lies the modular. If we were to build out of scratch, is it twice as much?
No, it's probably 25% more. We just went to have the facility constructed and plus longer lead time. Because a lot of the work happens off-campus.
But that 25% still also include though all the DSA stuff that goes into that? I mean, would you buy off-the-shelf plans for?
Well, no, you'd have the architect do the design, I mean, basically, the architect's done the design. We have the DSA approval now, so we're, this is going to bid. It also matches the R-Wing that currently exists at Casa Grande campus. So, you know, it's one of the, there are two separate manufacturers for the R-Wing. We did it in two phases. This is going back to the manufacturer, I believe, of the first phase. For this, you know, they've got, so it's probably, the reason for the disparity in cost is this is more to that company's current existing plans than the other company who also builds modulators.
Oh, I see. Okay. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eight goes for four. Item nine, alternative school choice waiver request authorization. This one's gonna, we're gonna need some discussion on this one. And this is for the state of California Department of Education to request a retroactively waived, request a, excuse me, request a retroactive waive to these sections of the California Education Code relating to school attendance and minimum school day, minimum school week, and minimum school year for the Gateway College Academy Charter School for 2013, 2014.
So. Second.
So as you know, the Gateway College Academy Charter is operated over at the Junior College. Students attend there. This is the first year, 1314 was the first year of operation. And we had written the charter in conjunction with the Junior College, thinking that we had, it's a unique model. And we thought we had addressed all of the technical and ed code issues within the charter itself. The auditors were recently here as a part of their visits. They'll finalize in October, but they found that in reviewing, there are certain ed codes that were not being met under that model. So these waivers would address the charter being funded. So right now, the auditors are saying that they have to disallow all the ADA earned under that charter because we don't have these waivers in place. Because the students are being taught by college professors instead of California teacher credentialed teachers. And so these waivers, which are already approved by, for example, Oakland Unified and San Francisco Unified for the same program, are already in existence. And we don't envision that the state superintendent of public instruction would have difficulty in signing off on these waivers because of that.
But as of now, we're running the Gateway School sort of in the clear. I mean, unfunded right now, right?
As of right this second, until we submit the waivers and they get approved, yes.
And then will it get back funded?
Actually, they fronted us the money.
But they'll take it away?
They would take it away.
But would it get back funded, will we get credit for?
That's the hope, that's the hope that the waivers, we don't know at this time. And the exposure.
My expectation is that, in reality, we will get the waivers approved before they take the fence back. Because the audit's not going to be filed until the, and hopefully the waiver will be approved for the audit being filed.
So is there, okay, but is there a chance that they will come back to hell that you didn't get the waiver until October?
They do, they do retroactive waivers for, that's a contract.
I mean, we're still kind of going forward, but yeah.
Yes, and then the next item is for the waiver for next year. And actually, it's a two-year waiver.
Yeah.
We, we thought because the state had approved the charter, that they approved the model. In reality, it does require a waiver.
So there was extra paperwork that you didn't expect?
Correct.
What a surprise.
That never.
The state never.
Okay. So, in the meantime, everything's moving forward.
Yes. What do you see in all of the Gateway for next year?
Right, right now, they have about 80 students. They, their first semester in operation, they had about 35, 36 students. The second semester of 1314, they added another 52 students to that. We're anticipating another 50 to 60 students being added in the fall semester. And as we explained, our funding model is very different than the Junior College, which gets funded on semesters, or, right, and we get funded on average daily attendance for the entire year. So if you add a big bunch of kids at the end of the year, you only get like 20% of their ADA. So they're front-loading, planning on front-loading in the fall semester and adding only, only kids in the spring that really need to be added into the safety net.
And this is a program where we were looking for somebody else to step up and be the LEA and work with the J C, nobody else was willing to. Because as you recall, we have significantly high graduation rate, we don't have a lot of dropouts. So we're only serving a few Petaluma City School District students in this program. We're serving many students from outside of our high school district through the Junior College in this program.
Got you. Okay. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, let's go then to the item 10, which is basically the same request but for, what, 2014, 2015, 2015, 2016?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm not going to read it again.
So. Second.
Any other story other than what we already just told?
No.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Alright, number 11, agreement authorization with AT&amp;T Capital Services for student computing devices. Now, it's a contract that we would be approving, an agreement, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
So. Second.
Discussion.
So there is an eighth-grade math pilot, is that what?
So.
Pilot going on, and so we are purchasing 860 devices, the Chromebooks, and for the pilot to be here and before school starts. And so this agreement allows us to purchase them at a deep discount as long as the district provides six months of data plan. With AT&amp;T, we're able to get a deep discount of at least $100 per unit. And ultimately, we're saving the bond funds dollars by entering into this agreement. And E-rate will credit us back for a portion of the data plan that we engage in with AT&amp;T.
Are we buying these, or supposed to leasing?
No, this is a purchase, this is a.
Last time, just didn't release that picture?
It was an option to lease, but we really didn't need to since we had the common core funds. We didn't opt into the leasing option.
So the data plan cost is not included in this, is that correct?
No, what you are seeing is just the purchase of the units for $168,000 and some change. The initial cost of the data plan is about $173,000. But ultimately, between the E-rate rebate, which is about 56%, we receive a rebate back from the federal government. And then there's an additional rebate from the California Teleconnect funds of another 50% after that. So ultimately, it will be a general fund cost of about $34,000.
And the data plans, not all of the data plans, but what the data plans, some of them, we will be using them as, for kids who don't have internet connections at home, there's a little hotspot that goes with this. And the kids can take the hotspot home and they'll be able to access all of their textbooks and all of that through the hotspot.
Okay. Is, go ahead. Is the data plan something we'd have to have in the unit? Or is it just related to just these devices?
We would have to have some sort of data plan for these kids.
Okay.
But I think there's more data plan than we will ever need. But it's also a finite time that we have the data plan for, it's good for six months.
Okay, is there for who again? This is for eighth grade?
These are for eighth-grade students.
At both Petaluma Junior and Kinnwort Junior High.
And Mary Collins.
And what's the shelf life of these things anticipated? Because we're purchasing them, what?
Three years.
Three years?
This is really a pilot of our one-to-one devices using the eighth grade since we will provide the opportunity to use eighth-grade eBooks for nothing.
For free.
Or if, this gives us an opportunity to pilot the one-to-one devices with eighth graders before we go hall students in 15, 16.
Does this include warranty protection if something happens?
One year.
One year, all, for any instance, like you accidentally spilled water on it, they cover it?
No.
Warranty is for malfunctioning equipment, not for user error. And so we're asking for a $30 donation for families or self-insure.
Which we've been doing with the sixth-grade Academy iPads for the last three years. We have a rest for a donation that we put into a self-insurance fund. And then anything that happens, for example, we had some button fatigue on the cases that we had on the iPads this year, and we had about six of them. The screens broke because just the way the button was hitting them. So we use that money, that $30, to get the screens fixed on those iPads.
What's our procedure, Steve, at the schools right now for textbooks? Like if a student accidentally or otherwise destroys a textbook?
Responsible for the cost of textbooks, so this is the same.
So we're going to have that same kind of plan in place?
Yeah, the idea though is with the $30 then, they've already provided the resources so that they don't have to come up with $100 or $300 for the device. We will replace it out of.
Well, obviously, it would be.
Not self-insured.
Over three years, you would, it would be depreciated, right?
Correct, and remember, in our bond program, we have, we will be reimbursing the cost of these with actions that the board is taking later out of the bond funds. So this is the initial purchase of one-to-one devices. Next year, we will purchase the devices for the remainder of the students in the district, although we have some Chromebooks currently available. And then we have two refreshes in the, in the bond program. So three years later, we will, we will purchase devices again for the students in the district. So the expectation is, we'll issue a device and you will keep it for three years. And it'll have your textbooks and materials on our operating system.
And Lori, ACERS are the way to go, I mean, that was researched pretty thoroughly.
Yes, so we're using Samsung right now, and all research points to the fact that the screen is a little thinner than the Acer, and that's where we're using, where our wreckage is. It's also where our wreckage is at the district and in other districts that I've talked to. And the Acer has a better shell to it, has a longer battery life. We're also going to deploy these with cases. And the case is a case that opens and the Acer never comes out of it, so it's connected in there.
Like this one?
Yes, no, but with a hard-thick shell. So, and we did some research on the case as well. And so we were able to get the manufacturer down from 25 to 17, so it was a pretty good deal.
That's the first line of insurances, to buy cases so they're better protected. And then they have the self-insure pool.
So is the cost of an extended warranty, it's just cost prohibitive, is that the idea?
Right, because you're looking at, you know, the device that we paid, you know, with the data plan, approximately $190 per device, so.
Where do they ask them for extended warranty?
You know, I did look into an insurance group, but typically $50.
So $30 that we ask folks to pay, is it, I mean, anybody who's had kids and cell phones, first one's 30 bucks, the second one, if you can get it, it's not 30 bucks. So is this per child? If Joey drops his Acer, is it an Acer, the third time?
There is, we're still working out all the details around this, so right now. Right, we all know Joey, we know Joey really well. And in some.
They know Joey.
I have Joey, I have a son who's not knowing Joey, but he is Joey. They, in many districts, what they do at the first, it's 30 bucks. And then if the child, if something happens again, it's malicious, then it's 60. And if something happens again and it's malicious, then they ask for 90 from the parents. So it's incremental, but the first ask for everybody is 30 dollars.
So is this the test run for the rest of the programs?
Yes.
That's what this is.
And you said that we're having access to eBooks for?
We have the access for eBooks, we already have all of the eBooks sitting in Lori's email at this moment for all the eighth graders' math, all of the math books. And I, we're researching right now, because our textbooks are a little older, we've got to do some in-depth research to find them in e-pub format. So we're working on that right now to find the history, any English trade books that the kids might be reading, and any other kinds of resources that we can get our hands on to get them onto these Chromebooks so that the kids will have the electronic version of them as well as the hard copy for, the math, they'll only have the electronic version.
Right, so, but they'll have the hard copies of the others that we currently have, we're not going to buy any. But what's the E-rate, or eBook cost directly?
Yeah, that's a question.
It's, it's interesting, there are different costs on the eBooks. The CPM math book that we're piloting and considering is an incredible deal on the eBook. They're letting us pilot this all for free. It would have cost us around $10,000 to pilot if we had piloted the actual books.
To buy the hard books, it would have been $10,000?
Yeah. It's a bound, I suppose.
It's a soft bound book, so you kind of have to replace them every year. The eBook, you get, you pay $36 for six years.
Well, that's pretty good.
Yeah. Now, that's not always, some, each publisher is different. And so some of them are a great deal, some of them are not such a great deal. The publishers are going to get their money.
Wait, 36 bucks for six years, as many people can download that and your licenses, per license?
Per license.
So one license per student?
Yeah, for six years.
Well, actually, it would be six students.
Six students using each year. It's basically going to cost six bucks a year.
It's a lot less expensive than.
Than the actual.
Than what it would have cost historically.
I don't know if you.
I was trying to.
Pay for your college kids' books, but.
Oh, goodness.
Right, I'm looking at a, we're, I'm researching right now an anatomy and physiology book that costs $250 per book, and looking at how we might be able to mitigate some of that cost through eBook.
What's it, just for.
I didn't say that.
Just for information. Just for information, Steve, approximately, what do we pay on textbooks per animal?
Well, yeah, we have purchased textbooks for seven years.
Okay, well, for seven years, I'm just saying, what was it?
We were getting $450,000 for an adoption in the high school district before. And then that wasn't always enough, sometimes you'd have to save two years of adoptions to buy one of the more expensive books.
Okay. Well, I was trying to give it some, just a public log, significant savings.
Our expectation is by going to one-to-one devices, we'll be out of the hard book. we'll be out of the hard book business and looking at eBooks and then also, resources online that will be available at no cost.
The other thing that we'll be piloting with the eighth graders and with the teachers is a learning management system, which is kind of a one-stop shop for everybody. All of the eBooks, everything are all, all the resources and all that are collected up all in this one place. The teachers can actually create quizzes and assessments, there, which will feed into a grade book, which will feed into Aries. It's just, it's kind of a one-stop shop. So, the company that we're using for our new filtering system is giving us also the pilot for free for all the kids for eighth grade for one year to see if it's something that we want to be doing.
And we need to really mention that we have training scheduled for our eighth grade teachers this summer using Common Core dollars. So we will be training them on the use of these new devices and how to implement that.
Starting Thursday.
And they correct them starting Thursday.
You want to start to stop by.
So not only are we embedding professional development for the teachers, we are also having parent nights where we're inviting the parents and the students to come before school starts to get an overview of how to use your Chromebook and what to do with your Chromebook. And also sign away, you know, their lives with this device to say, please take care of it, these are what we expect, these are our expectations. And we have two, four nights set up at, three, three nights at Helen Junior High and three at Kenmore as well, not including orientation days. So, that's when we'll be deploying the Chromebook. When your parent comes, here's our steel, signs an agreement for proper care, proper management, understands the rules of, we expect you to bring this device charged, we expect you to bring this device to school every day. This is the textbook, this is how you treat it. We expect it to stay in the case, those kinds of things. So we have, we also have a handbook that we've written that is being vetted through multiple staff members at each school site right now that will be, the policies in place at the school sites for, for the one-to-one.
So we've learned a lot from Sixth Grade Academy. We really have learned a lot on how to, how to do this. So what we're doing is just kind of scaling up to the next level before we get to next year where we'll go full district.
I guess another question I have is, having just got done going through an AT&T mobile phone contract over Washington Square. It took an hour and fifteen minutes to try to arrange four phones and get the right person with the right data and all that. And looking at that contract, it's pretty complicated. And, you know, that whole something-for-nothing thing, is there anything there that I'm not seeing? Is there any downside that's not apparent?
Well, the only.
You know what I mean, I mean, we all have that plan where, I mean, I can't get any phone for five years.
Right.
Right, it'll be the seven, six months of the data.
That's pretty much it.
I don't mean to ask such a broad question, but I just haven't just been through that with this company.
That is exactly it, you're getting, it's, it's like going to the cell phone company and you get, you know, the phone for fifty dollars because you've signed up for the multi-year contract. This is a similar situation where you're getting a deep discount on the units themselves because you're getting the data plan.
What is the plan for after six months?
You have to go to a penny suspend, you, you put the device on a suspension and it can stay on a suspension mode for up to nine hundred and ninety-nine days and then you have to resuspend that, otherwise it goes. My understanding is that it will go back onto an automatic reinstating of the data plan.
Gee, there's a chance.
So there is a management end to making sure that it doesn't go back onto, unless it's needed.
What about the students who don't have?
Right.
Then we'll be, then we'll be paying the data plan.
Okay, we'll pay the data plan for those kids.
Okay.
There's also a management council that goes with all this so that Lori and the team there will be managing, they'll be watching to see who's using the data and how the data is being used. It's a really huge pool of data and we'll be watching on the council to see.
I've already been on the council looking to see who uses the most data right now. We've, I've given some administration and some teachers the devices right now. And I'm the biggest user right now, so, but we have a pooled, each device is five gigabytes pooled over, you know, right now it's seven hundred and seventy-five, so it's a huge pool. So I don't expect us to go incur any overage costs, but we are looking at who's using what. We can suspend it right there through the console, we can delete them, we can take them out, we can do whatever we need to do remotely in order to make sure that we're on track. It seems to be working pretty well.
And these can't be used for any other purposes by students other than like textbook access where their teacher allows?
Well, what they could be used for is internet access. So any student can go any, on the internet. However, we just installed this week a new filtering system called Lightspeed. And Lightspeed uses a proxy server so that when students take the old device, device home, they're going through our filter. So when they go to a website that's not allowed by us, for instance, we've been playing with poker.com to make sure that we're, we're doing it correctly. And so, we just type in poker.com and it blocks the, you know, it blocks the filter. You can't override it, it says, I'm sorry, you don't have access to this. We do have a button on there that says you can request access to this website or any website that's blocked, so, and tell why. And then we can either open it or not open it, depending on that. And so that filtering system will follow every student that uses our internet or their internet all.
Okay.
You mentioned teacher training, what's, how many days of teacher training are offering, are you doing it?
So, what we're planning to do right now, so one day, a six-hour teacher training with follow-up trainings throughout the school year. Our first training is on July seventeenth. We have about thirty eighth grade, twenty-five to thirty, I have it all recently, eighth grade teachers coming on Thursday. It's an all-day training. We have another one scheduled for July thirtieth where we have about twelve. And then, August fifteenth is our staff development day where teachers who cannot make it in the summer will be able to be caught up during August fifteenth. And then all the teachers who were trained in the afternoon of August fifteenth will get another train on that learning management system called My Big Campus. So, we're going to go through best practices of a one-to-one classroom. We're going to teach them how to use their Chromebook. We're going to talk about how to create lessons that are technologically driven and how to implement those lessons and how to problem solve some things.
Is there a Common Core piece of that?
Yes, it's all Common Core related, we're all, everything's through the lens of Common Core. So all lessons created will be using the Common Core state standards, that's how we do our business.
And is it you and Jane doing it?
Actually, the training will be me and Jane and Emily Dunnington and Renee Summitt, she also has a piece, and then Dan Arroca, who is the sixth grade charter school teacher, will be giving a piece of the professional development as well.
And for the math book that's been chosen that you texted?
The teachers have all gone to training.
Oh, they have?
Yeah, so that's been a separate training that's gone through the company and they've been trotting off around the state, different, you know, they, people have different schedules over the summer and so, they've been off, they've been in Davis, there's been, there was a training in Davis, there was one in Sacramento, there's one in Antioch. They're, just wherever they could access it. It's a three-day training, they've all attended. By the end of the summer, they will all have attended a three-day training on the.
Oh.
All the great math teachers will have attended a three-day training on CPM.
That's great.
So what happens if the rollout doesn't work?
What do you mean?
Don't say.
Rollout, right, so rollouts work or they don't work, that's why we roll stuff out, so.
What we're going to learn from this one in regards to.
No, that's what I'm saying, that's what I'm saying, whatever commitments we have.
And we adjust.
Yeah, there's.
Six months commitment.
There's no option if we're not working, that doesn't, that doesn't, you know, we're going to have, we're going to have stumbles. We're all going to stumble, there's going to be problems, but we're going to work around those problems and move forward and, you know, I don't foresee any huge problems happening with, with all the devices. They should be coming in on time, we'll deploy them. Yeah, we're doing things that we've never done before, but.
There's full states on one-to-one devices, there's district and, other districts in the state of California that are on one-to-one devices. I mean, it, it does work and it's been proven elsewhere.
Well, I think rollout, I think. You roll something out, oh, it didn't work, so then we roll it back in and then we.
And then you, and then you make the tweaks and improvements and make it work.
We, yeah, we rolled out seven hundred and seventy-five devices for smarter balance testing. So, can I tell you that that went smoothly? No, but can I tell you in the end that it was successful? Yes.
So we'll, we will adjust, there's going to have to be adjustments. We will be having lots of meetings, you'll see us here. The, the lights will be burning late at night at the district office for the next couple of months until we get all of this, you know, all, we figure out all the things that we didn't anticipate, we're trying to anticipate as much as we can. Dana has been amazingly helpful to have teachers who have actually worked with this and be able to sit with them and say, okay Dana, what about this? Okay, what about that? You know, it's just been great to have to kind of incrementally grow this.
So the Sixth Grade Academy's had three years with one-to-one devices. And we saw the results in, in year two as to what that meant on the, you know, former test, state test.
How many more devices will we roll out after this rollout?
What's the, what's seven, seven thousand some devices next year?
Thousand two hundred next year.
Is our desire?
So does.
This year we will be giving every teacher a device. So after this eight hundred and sixty, we have four hundred and sixty, so, teachers that will each receive a device. And then the following year, we're going to one-to-one kindergarten through twelfth grade, so any student in our district will have the device in their hand.
Okay, so does this contract then tie in the rollout of all those other devices?
No.
This is, this sounds, for one thing, we're going to continue to evaluate the Acer, starting with that and verify that that's the device we want to move forward with in the next, next program. We'll also verify what, how things are working in other districts. I know in Southern California, they've got, you know, an iPad rollout, but we're not going there.
We know that LEUSD just took back their headsets from the twelfth grade, eleventh and twelfth graders and they're getting their Chromebooks now. So, other districts are ahead of us and we're learning from them as well. We're not tied to a device and we're not tied to a company to provide us that device.
What, what about if a, a, a student wanted to use his or her own device? I mean, even though it's, one's offered up by the school, let's say they have a MacBook Air or, you know, another type of device.
That's something that we're currently looking into, many districts allow the parents to buy the device.
Okay.
Something we're considering and have, you know, wasn't part of our original thinking, but we'll look at how successful that has been in other districts as we move forward.
Yeah, I was just curious if you were going to give them that option.
What about the seventh grader that's in the eighth grade math class? The eighth grader that's in the seventh grade math class?
Absolutely, that's something we'll think about. So, we have a sixth grader in Alamo. So, there will be day-use computers for those who forget their computer every so often. They'll be checked out, we're working on the process of how they'll be checked out, but one idea we have right now is that the library will have extras and so day-use computers will be checked out and then returned before you leave for the day. And so, definitely those students will be a part of that.
That kind of leads to my next question, so with the library, will there be integration? So, I get that we're going to have math books and English books, but if I wanted to tie in and read Grapes of Wrath, is the library going to allow for that? So we can tie in so they can.
That's in the future, the plan is to have eBooks available through the library. We're not there yet because we haven't had, you know, devices.
It's called a virtual library and I actually, some of us went to Isti last week in Atlanta and that's one of the, I actually went to the Chicago, the head library for Chicago Public Schools, a session with her and talking about virtual libraries and all that. And I was in a panic immediately with Stephen Vinge going, oh my God, we didn't think about virtual libraries, you know? So, I mean, there's lots coming.
That is, that's the future.
Well, it's not that far in the future.
No.
No, it's probably.
No, it's not. You know, two thousand thirty-one space, obviously, I mean, that's, that's within five years, I would imagine.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, definitely.
Definitely in five years.
That's what they're expecting.
Yeah, I mean, we've got a, where are we?
No, but I mean, we fully convert, I mean, I don't, I can't put a timeframe on it, but, you know, that. What's the annual cost of our library, Steve, if you know the topic ahead? And I always say R, I mean, both high schools.
We have libraries tied into our parcel tax right now where they buy all their materials and supplies and.
A lot of it is, is going online for services and access to libraries. I mean, they're already doing some of that already, but it's the push-out to the devices.
No, I get that, but roughly, regardless of who pays, I'm just asking for a ballpark figure. Forget the librarian, huh? It's.
It just varies depending on.
A hundred thousand dollars, fifty thousand dollars.
They were, I don't know if I'm talking my head.
Okay, that's a good answer, we'll find out.
Well, thank you, that's a huge project, it sounds like, lots going on, yeah. But exciting, six, three, and I'm glad that there's the pilot.
Yeah, we were, it was, we were, it was serendipitous, it was one of those serendipitous things that came together.
Good, and that we had the Sixth Grade Academy.
Yeah, thank, but thank goodness that we had that, the practice with that, yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Twelve, fourteen, fifteen oh one, Board of Education, Pelham City Elementary and Joint Union High School Districts authorizing signatory for budget transfers of funds. Is this an annual resolution?
So. So every year we do this, it authorizes the superintendent, the chief business official or the supervisor of budget and accounting to sign off on budget transfers.
Okay, but you have a problem with that?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Resolution fourteen fifteen oh two, Board of Education, Pelham City Elementary School District, Pelham Joint Union High School District, Sonoma County, State of California, to establish General Fund zero six.
So, second.
Oh, we had a zero six. Did you abolish a zero six? Didn't we, zero six was.
That sounds really familiar to me.
Doesn't it though?
Yeah, it does.
Yeah, we haven't had, we haven't had a fund six.
We haven't had a fund six yet.
Well, we put it in this file.
Well, we are going to put these go programs that we're taking back as a consortium. So, we are, the South County consortiums, all those smaller elementary school districts and our district are combining forces to decrease costs overall and serve the kids on a more local basis rather than shipping them to the Sonoma County office event or somewhere else in the county. And that's part of the model that, the reason why we're installing the new building at Casa Grande is having the kids being served here locally. So, Padaloma will be acting as the LEA for the consortium and handling all the payroll and the, just the.
We can compensate for that?
Um, just on an indirect cost level basis, we're doing it because.
Ten percent of all funds handled, right?
Actually, I think it's a maximum of seven percent.
The, the one thing to note, I mean, yeah, this will be at no cost to the district, but we'll, we'll enjoy the savings associated with the consortium and having the kids locally in our programs as opposed to paying the go rate and having them go to programs out, out of the area. Just to back up a little bit, to make sure that everyone knows, we're talking about the funds for the facilities, we're talking about these programs, we're not talking about district general funds. Going back to that four hundred and some thousand is capital facility funds. We're going to be getting into the bonds soon this evening as well.
Right, no, I understand. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Add a fourteen, resolution fourteen fifteen oh three, Board of Education, Pelham City Elementary School District, certify to the Board of Supervisors of Sonoma County, all proceedings in the June third, two thousand fourteen, general obligation bond election.
So. Second.
It sounds very overreaching, certifying all proceedings.
I think it's just technicality.
All those in favor?
The board recognizing the outcome of the bond election on June sixth.
I saw Mike's picture on the artist's card.
Yes.
Front page.
Front page, yeah, we were watching the results.
We're watching the results. I'm sorry, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Moving on to fifteen, add a resolution fourteen fifteen oh four, Board of Education, Pelham Joint Union High School District, certify to the Boards of Supervisors of Sonoma and Marin Counties, all proceedings in the June third, two thousand fourteen, general obligation bond election.
So, second.
Second.
Same exact thing, only the high school district.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
I, I have one question, that's okay, but I mean, why is one being just Sonoma County and then there was Sonoma and Marin Counties?
Just the high school district.
Is this the high school district because of Marin?
Yes.
The stage is over.
That's a technical education term.
What's that?
Oozes over.
That's an echo.
Resolution, item sixteen, resolution fourteen, fifteen, oh five, Board of Education, Pelham City Elementary School District, requesting the Board of Supervisors, County of Sonoma, to establish tax rate for bonds of Pelham City Elementary School District expected to be sold during fiscal year two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen and authorizing necessary actions in connection therewith.
So, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, closed. So what am I in? Fourteen? Seventeen. Item, resolution fourteen, fifteen, oh six, Board of Education, Pelham Joint Union High School District, requesting the Board of Supervisors, County of Sonoma, to establish tax rate for bonds of Pelham Joint Union High School District expected to be sold during fiscal year two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen and authorizing necessary actions in connection therewith.
So, second.
Same deal, all those in favor?
Same.
Aye.
Aye, closed. Resolution fourteen, fifteen, oh seven, Board of Education, Pelham City Elementary School District, authorizing issuance? Here we go. We'll get into the meat of it.
Yeah.
This is the real stuff now. Authorizing the issuance and sale of general obligation bonds. Election of two thousand and fourteen, series A, and principal amount not to exceed seven million dollars. Improving related documents and actions.
So, second. This is just you giving us authorization to move forward with the sale and get that process moving. So, pretty exciting stuff.
The intent is to, remember, three sales. So this is roughly a third for elementary. It is exactly a third. It's roughly a third in the secondary district.
When will the sale take place?
End of August. We're, this is, this is fast track trying to be able to do things like purchase eight hundred and sixty Chromebooks for the eighth grade class and starting to implement tech packages in all of our classrooms for, during the course of this year. Implementing Wi-Fi throughout the district to automate one-to-one devices in the following year.
Is there any reasonable strategy to the seven million and twenty-three million?
One-third of...
Is that the math we could do in a, in a...
Yeah, that's what our bonding capacity will allow us to sell. And we expect every three years that our bonding capacity will allow us to sell another seven thousand. And it will be contingent on the natural progression of this, the assessed values going up.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, closed.
Thank you.
And assisted to this, resolution fourteen, fifteen, oh eight, Board of Education, Pelham Joint Union High School District, authorizing the issuance and sale of general obligation bonds. Election of two thousand and fourteen, series A. Principal amount not to exceed twenty-three million and improving related documents and actions.
So, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed. The discussion on the filings for the bond?
Yeah, I, I'm just curious how, how we're going to try to find people to do this.
We will put out requests as we have, have on an ongoing basis for the partial tax oversight committee. This, the difference between the partial tax, which was the board's choice to have the partial tax oversight committee, which passes the property nine bond.
Mandatory.
This is mandatory.
Right.
We mirror the partial tax under the rules and requirements of property nine bonds. This will be a lot more structured and formal than the partial tax oversight.
Is this, this is vetted and, I mean, this is...
This is, this is drastically legal council who, who has vetted this in a number of districts.
Okay, good.
Can any of the same people start?
Well, because I don't want to have application point people and then find out, oops, they missed a criteria.
Can the same people start the date of, so...
Yes.
Yeah. And this is going to be one committee versus the partial tax, which is separate, elementary and, and secondary. This will be a joint.
Combined.
Combined, yeah.
But I noticed that there's limits on how long they can serve. So...
Correct.
And all of that, well, it's staggered. It said it was, you're going to draw the hat to see who's got a couple people that go one year.
Right. But also they only can do so many consecutive.
Two, not to exceed three consecutive terms. So it'll be a six-year max, max.
And we have how many years of this that needs to go?
Well, we have ten years for the issuance of the bonds. Well, it goes until we spend the bonds. Right now, our core plan is it's a ten-year building program. It could extend beyond that. It will not be less than ten.
If, if the state, for example, passes bond measures that we can enjoy to, you know, add to our coffers and spread the money further, it could be longer.
If we spend the money like the state does, it'll be about a week. All right. Any questions on the enrollment or ADA report? Nothing in Educational Services that is a bold item? Do we have future business you want to discuss before we turn back to closed session?
No, just, we, we don't meet for five weeks. So this is the biggest break that we have at any time in the course of the year, I believe. Going from now to the fourth week in August, I think.
August nineteenth is our next day.
That's our third week.
School starts.
Yeah, the day, the day school starts.
No, no, when's our next meeting?
Huh? August nineteenth?
Okay. That's, that's the longest break this calendar year.
I love how kids in the schools might all graduate, so I don't know.
I said that's the longest break this calendar year.
Yeah, it's the longest break.
Well, next year we'll have a very shorter because we're not going to be in the All-Star.
Yeah, choice.
Well, it could be, it could be longer because if you moved it to the other side.
We could have just had it on the eighth, yeah. All right. So can we go closed?
Yes.